Take one, get it.
Good evening and welcome to the Garfield Heights City School District Regular Board Meeting. Today is Monday, December 19th. I call tonight's meeting to order. Mr. Saluka, can I have roll call, please?
Yes, Ms. King.
Here.
Mr. Isom, Ms. Morrison.
Here.
Ms. Thomas, Mrs. Daniels.
Here. Mr. Saluka, can you allow the minutes to show that both Mr. Isom and Ms. Thomas is excused? The next item on tonight's agenda is the motion to adopt tonight's agenda.
So moved. Second.
Mr. Saluka, that was moved by Ms. King and second by Ms. Morrison. Can I have roll call, please?
Ms. King.
Yes.
Ms. Morrison.
Yes.
Mrs. Daniels.
Yes.
At this time, we'll have our moment of silent reflection and our pledge of allegiance will be led by Ms. King this evening. Moment of silence. Ms. King.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, can I have a motion to adopt the minutes from November 19th, 2022 special meeting and October 17th, 2022 regular meeting as presented?
I'm sorry, I should say November 17th.
November, sorry.
That's mine.
Allow me to restate that. Can I have a motion to adopt the minutes from the November 19th, 2022 special board, special meeting and the November 17th regular board meeting as presented?
So moved. Second.
Is there any discussion? If there's no discussion, Mr. Saluka, that was moved by Ms. King and that was second by Ms. Morrison. Can I have roll call, please?
Ms. King.
Yes.
Ms. Morrison.
Yes.
Mrs. Daniels.
Yes.
Before I start my Board President's Report, do we have any more chairs for us, Mr. Saluka?
I think they're hiding back there or something.
Thank you. At this time, I'll have my report. On behalf of everyone in the Garfield Heights City Schools and the entire Board of Education, I wish our school family a safe, happy, and enjoyable holiday season. At no greater time are the talents and treasures of the students and staff at the Garfield Heights City Schools on display than during these past few several weeks. Those who took the time to attend a holiday performance, activity, or competition will attest that our students and staff truly work every day to uphold the mission and the vision of our district. On behalf of the Board of Education, we congratulate Coach Johnson, which is here tonight. Yes. On attaining this most recent milestone of 300 career victories as a coach. While this occasion marks 300 wins as the basketball coach, Coach Johnson has been notching victories in the community for many, many years and for hundreds and hundreds of student athletes and families. Congratulations and thank you for your contributions you have made to our school community. Let's give them a hand. Students and staff have the opportunity to participate in a all-call for the Mahajad Dance Collective for drummers and dancers who will participate in this year's Black History Month celebrations through our Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Team. These are great opportunities for our students to understand culture, communications, in a safe and productive manner. Congratulations to those families who made the decision to participate and we look forward to seeing your hard work during our Black History Month program in February. You may have seen our wonderful students portrayed in positive manners in the local broadcast news recently. And we want to give a special shout-out to Channel 5 News who on two occasions have positively spotlighted our elementary students, our high school students, our staff members, and Superintendent Dr. Reynolds. Thank you to our student performers from the high school band, the theater department, our vocalist and music express, and others who've gone above and beyond to entertain or perform within our community at Veterans Day, Thanksgiving, winter break, and other opportunities. As we have heard Dr. Reynolds say many times, "We are all in this together and if we stay this course, remain dedicated to one another, we will successfully reach every child every day together." This concludes my report. Please have a blessed and wonderful holiday. Thank you. At this time, we'll have our committee reports. Are there any reports this evening?
Madam President.
Ms. King.
I just have a quick community and family engagement liaison report. Last Tuesday, the Ohio School Board passed a resolution in opposition to the expansion of the federal Title IX laws. This does not have a direct impact on school districts. However, we may need to be prepared to answer questions from parents and the public on how we address transgender policies such as transgender gender bathroom usage and sports-related questions. The resolution will be sent out. They have 21 days to send it out. Each board member will get one directly emailed or mailed to us as well as the superintendent. So we should be getting those at the beginning part of January. I also would like to wish everyone a happy and a healthy holiday season. And with that, standing my report.
And Ms. King, is there any questions regarding Ms. King's report this evening? If there's no questions, is there any other reports this evening? Ms. Morrison?
No, I do not have any reports today.
Thank you. Ms. King, just to piggyback on your report, I had the opportunity one yesterday to attend the annual skating with Santa at the recreation center and the director, Paul Burke, indicated that we had a record number of families and students from the community that participated this year. And as he was talking and engaging with the families, they indicated that they found out about it through the school district. So Mr. Burke wanted to extend the thanks to Dr. Reynolds and the school community for collaborating with the city and ensuring that we notified the families so that our rec actually had a record-setting attendance at the annual skating with Santa. So it was a fabulous evening. So just wanted to share that for community engagement. So thank you, Dr. Reynolds, for the work that you have done to bridge that gap between giving our families access to the activities that's available within our city. And thanks to the city for offering those opportunities for our families to participate in our recreation activities for nominal fees. So it was a really good time and a lot of fun. That's us all working together.
That is.
If there's no other reports this evening, I'm going to turn this portion of our meeting over to Dr. Reynolds for our presentations. We're gonna have a...
Yes. Thank you all for the opportunity to really discuss our academic team plan moving forward. I wanted to ensure that we had a clear and concise plan to respond to what we've seen on our school report card. And at the beginning of the year, we talked about a few things. We talked about where we're gonna start, where we're gonna want to start. We're gonna look at the standards. We're gonna then look at assessments and instruction. Those were kind of the foundational pieces of what we're gonna do to respond to the data reflected in the school report card. And with those standards, making sure that all of our teachers, administrators understood what those standards were asking for, creating assessments that responded to the level rigor of those standards, and then the instruction to ensure that we're mastering those standards. That was the foundational piece, almost the root and core of what we're trying to do in the plan that we've developed so far. So with that plan, there are some pieces of the plan or some pieces of that foundational piece that we need to ensure is happening to ensure that those things are actually happening. There's gonna be four pieces: instruction, culture and climate, leadership, and community resources and facilities. So wanted to tell you about the process, how we started to develop this plan. What we did, we gathered our partners. And our partners were the Teaching and Learning Department, Special Education, People's Services. The ESC also stepped in to provide support to student, the state support team, and our building leadership, just to really kind of collaborate to begin the process of developing this plan. Eventually, what we're gonna do is announce it or have a conversation with some of our teacher leaders to also get their input on the plan of the foundational pieces that we're putting together. So development of the task force, those four pieces of those four areas, we developed a task force to really focus on instruction, culture and climate leadership, and community resources and facilities. So first thing I wanted to do was, instead of just kind of going out there and saying, "Here's what we're doing", I needed to establish a vision. Now, there are a lot of different ways to kind of communicate a vision. There are a lot of words and a lot of jargon that you can put in the vision. Really just talk about where we're going as a district. I wanted to keep it simple, to make sure that everyone understood exactly where we're going and what we're doing. And that is the vision: student success is our purpose. Everything that we do is going to be around student success. And what's gonna be very important about student success is that we have to remember that we can only do this thing together. So that means that we have to be able to collaborate. That means that staff members have to be committed to that, to students, and also staff members have to be committed to each other. Again, this is the only way that we can do this because we have to build that level of trust and collaboration in order to really move students forward. Because that is the point, growing each child, not just kind of looking at this thing and, "Okay, we're just gonna be focused on just proficiency. What we're doing is growing each child. Where they are right now, we're gonna grow them." And the only way that we can do that is together. By doing that, we can then impact our P.I. score. Where our P.I. score is basically our performance index that shows growth of our students. That is gonna be our proof that what we're doing is actually working. And all students will experience this supportive, professional, engaged learning experience with committed staff members. Every child needs a champion. They deserve a champion. So we're gonna make sure that they're having that. And our why is pretty evident. Our why is because our state report card shows some serious deficiencies, deficits, that we have to dig our way out of. And the only way we can do this is if we have a clear plan on where we are going. There are a lot of different words and everything up here that we will be able to provide for you. You can read on your own, but there are some areas that I wanted to make sure that we took a look at, that we have to do this by creating some common assessments. We need to be able to compare apples to apples instead of apples to oranges. So we have to have conversations over data and those common assessments creates that opportunity for data. Professional development. We can only get better by working on getting better. It doesn't just happen. We have to make sure that we develop some professional development opportunities for everyone. And the last piece, as a district, everyone has to accept this challenge. This is a part of what we're gonna do to make sure that the kids are successful and everything in this district that this district does must focus on student success. So we're gonna start on that first area, instruction. Provide the highest quality, evidence-based instruction in tier one. So we've started doing something. It's just the Teacher Clarity Book. That's actually the title. It's just called the Teacher Clarity Book, but what it really is, it's really unpacking the standards to make sure everyone understands exactly what those standards are and understand where we're going with that scope and sequence as well. So that is the first part of that. In the next part, we've done great as a district to collect the data. Now what we're gonna do to improve is now responding to that data. Instead of just collecting and saying, "Here's what we have", now we're gonna create structures to respond to that data. And part of that is by looking at our TBT, DLT, and our DLT structure. We've done some things, and I think most districts have done some things, to make sure that we were consistent with what the SST team has asked for. We need to have something that's a little more responsive to what we're doing as a district, not just let's make sure that we remain consistent with what SST, let's remain consistent where our students are saying that they're needing. And then we're gonna develop these curriculum guides for all of our subject areas with common assessments. So this is a different framework than what we've done in the past, which most school districts still do it the same way, where they look at the standards and then they do the instruction and then assessment. What we're gonna do is look at those standards, unpack those standards, understand what those standards are, create an assessment. And the assessment will then tell us, "Okay, here's the level rigor of the standards." Let's create an assessment that matching the level rigor. And now our instruction then feeds that. So that is a different framework that we're going to incorporate in what we're doing. K to three literacy dyslexia training. We've already had that training. There are about 10 teachers who are gonna require this training. Foundations rollout, AIMS, AIMS Well Plus. But the last part is something that we're gonna be doing during the summer. After we've done all these things that we're doing instructionally, we're gonna get the scores back. So what do we do with the scores? Just look at them and pass them on. No, that's not what we're gonna do. What we're gonna do, we're gonna start making some decisions based on the information that we're getting to see what gaps that we're still need to address. So that's gonna be happening during the summer where the gaps with master schedules, where there's assessments, or whether it's our scope and sequence, which is also called our pacing guide. We're gonna be looking at that data to then make some adjustments. The next piece is the culture and climate. PBIS is a huge part of what we do in this district. We've been recognized for our work with PBIS. But what we want to do is ensure that we're doing PBIS with fidelity, so it is showing not only with behaviors, but it's also showing with what we're doing academically. So we're gonna be doing those tier fidelity inventory. Those reviews are basically walkthroughs of the building where the SST teams walk through and ask individuals questions, teachers, students, and just to ensure that we're on the same page when we're talking about PBIS. Develop expectations for MTSS. That is where we're looking at mental health. We're also looking at how we're doing discipline right now, restructuring discipline. There are some things that we need to make sure matches our handbook and our systems to make sure those things are matching right now. District-wide SEO. We've done SEO pretty well in some buildings, but we need to make sure we have these things across the board. Safety and security is also an area that we're gonna be doing. But we're also gonna be doing something as a board, as we talked about in our last meeting, to put together a safety and security committee. And CPI training. CPI training is a response, basically it is ensuring that we can de-escalate situations. And sometimes in certain situations, we may restrain students in a way that's not harmful to them. And that's what that training is. I've done that in every single district that we've been a part, that I've been a part of. Cultural diversity. We're gonna be providing professional development for both our certified and non-certified staff. If you see those numbers, those numbers are basically where we've remained consistent with what the district has been doing so far. School and family engagement. Parent university. We want to ensure that we're engaging parents as partners, families as partners. So what the parent university will do is help parents to help their children in the classrooms, provide any type of professional development for our parents as they tell us that they need, and also post-secondary exposure. Want to ensure that we're doing that. And obviously, we need to make sure that we're compliant with our special education program. And this area is the leadership piece. We are talking about all the things that teachers will need to be able to do. Now, we need to make sure that as a leadership team, that we are able to support those things. So we're gonna be creating a leisure PLC. And all those are the things that we're gonna be doing to make sure our principals and our building leaders are able to support our students. But the first area is restructuring staff and office space. I want to make sure that everyone on the bus is in the right seats. So that is what that is, even with office spaces, making some adjustments just so that I'm a little closer to the work when we're talking about with academics. The data analysis tool is something we're gonna also incorporate in making sure the department huddles. What those titles are, just ensuring that our leaders are having instructional conversations on a regular basis. Our principals and our buildings need to be instructional leaders, and this is one of the ways that we will be doing this. The last area is community resources. Then what we're gonna be doing is to begin to explore those opportunities to repair some of our facilities with our middle school and also with our stadium. Those two areas are our highest needs and hopefully we'll be able to develop a plan in order to respond to that. Hire operations director. Unfortunately, we are losing someone to retirement, and I'm jealous. We're losing someone to retirement and we're gonna need to hire operations director and also conduct facility audits. What those are, basically walkthroughs of the buildings. We don't want to get to a point where we're not taking care or not being good stewards of the facilities that we currently have. So we want to make sure that we're doing some regular walkthrough evaluations and developing the infrastructure for those systems. Those are the walkthroughs. And the last piece right here is the development of district building restructuring plan. We are looking now to possibly, and we are only at the beginning stages, of looking at our K to five buildings and seeing how we can restructure to ensure that we are getting the most bang for our buck when we're talking about collaboration with teachers, when we're talking about conversations, instructional conversations, to improve what we're doing academically. And those are all the things that we're gonna be doing. Obviously, the final plan that we're gonna submit to the board is gonna have a little more details than what I'm giving right now so that you know exactly what we're doing. But this is gonna be the evidence that we are going to take care of every child every day together. And that is the conclusion of that. Are there any questions regarding this plan?
Thank you, Dr. Reynolds, for your presentation this evening. This was very comprehensive and I do also appreciate you aligning it with our strategic plan goals as that assists the board in just ensuring that we're covering every area of the strategic plan. So 4.1s and 4.2s are our goals and the district strategic plan that you can find on our website. Do anyone have any questions regarding Dr. Reynolds' report this evening?
I do have one quick question. With CPI, is this a retrain or is this...
It is a retrain.
Okay.
It is a retrain.
Thank you for a comprehensive strategy in order to move our students and our district forward. I appreciate you covering every aspect from the educator, bus driver, cabinet, teacher, down to just every aspect, because it's gonna take all the way through the community and the parents. Our students need all of us on board, moving together with the same plan to ensure that we begin to see what we know our students have in them, that we begin to assist them in being students and academically ready to be successful in the community. That's our goal as a district. And I'm excited and the board is most definitely on board to support the district in ensuring that every student, every day, and we're doing this together. When will... The plan is great. When will the board get updated? Is it annually or when will this plan, you kind of look at, is the plan actually producing what we're promising?
Yeah. So what, a part of this plan that you don't see here, because it is on the final piece with all the information, it actually has who's responsible for this work and here's the timeline. So each one of these committees, each one of these task force will be meeting monthly to update the system, to update what we have as inventory, to update that information. So you all will be kept abreast on a monthly basis how we're coming along. That was created to hold everyone accountable, including myself, for you all to hold me accountable to this plan. So that is something that is extremely important that we do in order to make this thing work, that we need to be held accountable, including me. So all that information will be provided for each of you.
With this plan, were there be some action steps for the board? Will we need to consider some additional resources financially? Will we need to maybe take a look at some policies and procedures? Will we maybe need to look at our strategic plan and maybe possibly make some adjustments? So as we're moving forward in this plan, what do you need from the Board of Education in order to support the success of our plan, which in turn will be success of our students?
Yes, all of the above. There's gonna be some aspects. One of which, I know that once we have our scope and sequels in place, we want it to be board-approved. The reason why we want it to be board-approved is because everyone is gonna be held accountable for a new policy that the board has approved. So it's gonna be extremely important that once this thing gets to the point, or once we get to the scope and sequence to the point, that this is something we're gonna adopt. We're gonna need board approval for that scope and sequence. But there are gonna be a few other things that we're still working out. As I said, we're looking at restructure. So we're gonna need your assistance in those things to really try to understand where, how far we can take this and your approval on doing those things. But we have to, again, we're at the beginning stages where we're just trying to understand where we are and if it's even feasible.
Thank you, Dr. Reynolds.
Thanks so much.
Madam President, I have a follow-up question.
Yes, Mr. King.
In terms of our strategic plan, I love the way that your plan fits with our strategic plan. I want to know, are we going to get an update on the other parts of the strategic plan that may not have been covered with your academic plan? Because it has been a while and I know, you know, we may have to do some adjustments to our strategic plan like Madam President alluded to. But I think it might be also time, you know, at the beginning of the year, first quarter, to give an update on the entire strategic plan.
I agree. I agree. One of the things that we need to ensure it happened is that everything tied in together. What I've seen in other districts, other areas, is we've had a lot of initiatives to just doing a lot of different things that none of those things actually fed into each other. This plan shows everyone in the district how it all feeds into each other. I know we were doing some professional development. There's some questions about how does these things, are we just doing? This is how all these things work together, including the strategic plan. So yes, we can do an update on the strategic plan and revisit that. I'd like first to possibly set a date so we can do that. What we're doing now is actually putting in information into the strategic plan where we're saying where we are with all those, the goals that we're placing in the strategic plan.
Thank you. Thank you. Is there any other questions? If there's no other questions, thank you, Dr. Reynolds.
Thank you so much.
Dr. Reynolds, you can introduce your next presentation.
Yes. We will now be hearing from Ms. Cherry Bailey.
Thank you.
And Ms. Kelly Star.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Reynolds. Thank you, Mrs. Daniels, and thank you to the school board members. We really appreciate the opportunity. Some of this, I kept a couple things in here just because we had a new school board member, so I'll have to make sure I get with him because I just thought it would be an opportunity to go over some things. I want to, I always ask the team to come because it is a team and we're a department that we all work together to make sure that we keep everything running well into the district. So with me tonight is Jim Kasudar, our network manager, and then Tim Shavasinski, also our network technician. And I didn't see if anybody else kind of snuck in from the back when I wasn't paying attention. But we have two new members of our team this year, Jeff Gibson, actually three. Jeff Gibson and Larry Cameron, two network technicians that have also been helping us. Um, new, one since July and one since last month, but they're doing an excellent job. And then Kevin Sparks is new since last March doing Airmen supervisor. So I asked him to talk about some things related to EMIS, um, and, you know, we'll get to that here in a minute. But, um, I can't, again, speak enough about how, how important it is to have a team that works together and have the shared vision and make sure that we're doing things to support all of our students and all of our staff in this district, to make sure that everybody can do their job, which is ultimately educating our children. So, thank you. So, you know, our job really is to keep everything working. You know, we try and maintain all of our district systems to make sure our goal is 100% uptime. That doesn't always happen, but that's always the goal because you have to strive for that all the time. Um, if, if things aren't working right, then no one can do their job, whether it's the business of school or whether it's educating with the students. So I put a little bit this and I'll, I might go over this a little bit faster just because, like I said, we have a new school board member. But really, you know, we do one for one for our students. We do iPads for preschool, kindergarten, special education. We have teachers that use iPads for AIM's web assessments, so we do a lot of things with iPads. PCs for all of our teachers, I'll talk more about that in a minute, and we do have some PC computer labs at our high school. Um, we support the door access control system. I know Dr. Reynolds was just mentioning, looking at a technology system or really building systems, right? So some of these are these building systems that, um, you know, we make sure that we try and always have a plan for, for keeping things current. So we support our security systems in the district. We have 11 different servers in all of our buildings. Um, please, and these are the number of cameras we have in each location. Um, we have 117 analog cameras, which are some of the cameras that are the older cameras in the district. Quite a few of them are at the middle school and obviously we've been discussing building in the building. And, um, after the work session, we discovered, you know, it's not going to be a tomorrow thing. But ultimately, we're trying to, to use our resources wisely. When things need to be placed in the middle school, we're making sure that we can replace things that then could possibly be used somewhere else because hopefully we'll be having a new building coming. This is a picture of the wiring closet in the high school, which as far as I'm concerned is the best wiring closet in the whole district. Um, when we built that high school, you know, there, it, it was the kind of thing that you couldn't pay to be educated in how to build a brand new building like that. And, um, I always joke that the cable in there is purple and it's one of my favorite colors. Not that I got to pick it, but it just worked out really nice. But it's huge and it's beautiful and it was planned well. Instead of a lot of our buildings, you know, we do things kind of, we didn't have connectivity and cable way back when, when our schools were built. So, um, this is just an idea of one of our battery backups. That one is, this one is in our high school closet. Um, the design for this battery backup, it backs up the entire network room for a certain number of minutes to make sure there's enough time for the generator to kick in, keep the building up and running in the event of a power outage. Um, this is one of the, um, ESX server farms that we actually have. This is the one at the high school. It's actually 24 servers. Um, they're actually virtual. We have one in the middle school, one in the high school. They back up each other across our network. Doctor Big, we should have a, a catastrophe happening to one of our buildings. They back up from the middle school to the high school and back again. And then every night we back up offsite to connect. So we have a full backup of everything offsite as well. Um, we also support Transfiner, which is transportation software. Peopleworks, which is the human resources software. Neals Plus, which is cafeteria software. And I guess by support I really mean in all these things, it's not actually, you know, we're not trained in how to actually do all the utilization of them, but we're making sure the pieces, parts work. You know, that the, um, software works, the database is getting updated, we're backing up all these things in the event of some type of an emergency. We support our printers and copiers. We manage Paper Cut, which is, has the ability to manage the district's printing and copying. Um, and then we have 105 copiers and printers in the district. I'm going to talk about that again in a, in a minute. Um, we also support DocuWare, which is one of the things, um, I don't know if you guys, if you all remember, a few years back, maybe about eight now, there was a fire in Willoughby South School District and they lost records, records forever. So around that time, we started looking at a program called DocuWare that, where we scan in transcripts, IEPs, HR papers, finance documents, and that too then gets backed up to a server that gets backed off to connect offsite. So it's something that we, you know, when that happens, you know, it, it's really a jolt and trying to figure out the right things to do. Um, PD Express is a website that's used for LPDC. Our district wireless is a Rubi system. We use a management system called What's Up Goal. We get text messages when any piece of equipment in the district goes down. And then we get text messages when they come back up again and hopefully that happens immediately. But, um, you know, we know that we can make good decisions about what the equipment is, how, how the impact of it being down and, you know, if we have to do something then, or it's something that can wait till the next day. Should it be in the evening? So, if there are antivirus software, we do Microsoft Windows updates, um, through the WSRS server. And, uh, phone system, we have a Denoma, which is a relay that takes voicemails that relays it to Gmail. We have 530 phones and I'll be talking a little bit more about Cisco Phone System here in a minute, so. All right, so we also filter the internet. We have a Cisco Umbrella Server that we use for all of the district. PCs primarily Macs. We use Go Guardian for our Chromebooks. Um, we have a firewall in place and we've been really trying to move everything to having an increased presence with cybersecurity. Some of the, um, the public school works have sessions on that related to spam and related to, um, cyber, you know, stalking and getting emails that actually are not real. Um, but we, we moved everybody to two-step authentication, as painful as it was for some. But we've done that and we're doing even more with that this year. Um, we have Google Workspace, you all know that. We use, our, our email addresses are technically Gmail, even though they're regular school email addresses. But last year we put in place something called Cis-Cloud. Cis-Cloud backs up the entire Google domain, backs up all Google Classroom, backs up all of our Gmail. Um, it backs up everything and that backs up, uh, offsite as well. Um, it's a cloud-based program, so that's something that we put in place, you know, especially as we were really became dependent on Google Classroom. It was important to make sure we had those backups. Um, this is really the huge one and the, and the screen doesn't give it justice, but it's ClassLink. So ClassLink we started, thank goodness, we started it before the pandemic because it is how we roster all of our students overnight into all of the programs that we have purchased as a district that all of our students need to use. AIM's Web being one of them, one of the, the training programs. Um, math assessments is another program that we roster. All of the curriculum program, there's a new math program called Envision that the middle school's using this year. What happens is our students are entered into a progress book. That information then, it creates, um, a few different network accounts, including their Google accounts. It automatically then, based on who they are, what teacher's class they're in, they get put in all of these different programs. And it's not, you know, occasionally it's not flawless, but it's beautiful. It's a beautiful program because if somebody comes, we get them rostered, all their programs immediately. And it's, it really kind of, you know, if you think of a phone and your apps on your phone, that's really what it is. It's a, it's a desktop, it's a, it's a launchpad that has all your apps and all your programs. And a lot of them are single sign-on, so students don't need to know 20 passwords, which is huge, so. Um, just really fast, high priority tickets. A teacher that can't teach, a student that can't learn if their device is down, teacher's computers down. Those are high priority tickets. If we have, uh, 10 copiers in a building and one is down, that's not a hot priority immediately because we know that when you print, you can print anywhere in the district. So there's always other places where you can get your job out. Um, this is just some data as of 12/6, when I started running some of it. Um, it's our tickets that we have in SchoolDude. If you know me, you know I love SchoolDude because if you open a ticket, five of us see it. If you send me an email, well, maybe I just see it, but maybe I'm in doing something else or in a meeting and I'm not seeing it immediately. So this is by, you know, different types, new equipment requests, internet connection issues, phone issues, copier issues. Um, here's, here's another one that's broken down by building to give you an idea. The, the one at the bottom is the Bus Garage, which really is a transportation center, so they've only had 14 tickets this year. Um, but this gives you an ID broken down by building. And then we use one-to-one manager. One-to-one manager lets us, it imports our student information system, so all of our students are in there. We have imported from Google all of our Chromebooks. You know, it lets us assign a device to a student. It lets us to see the last time you logged in, it lets us to disable it, should it become lost. Um, we have a lot of powerful things in there that we can actually use and, um, uh, assign a loner if something gets lost. We document any breakages in here, so it's really a good system that we use. Um, I put this in here a little bit and I'm going to talk a little bit more about some of the connections with the strategic plan, um, a little bit in more detail. But really, you know, the technology department in a lot of ways, we support all the different departments, the buildings, the different, um, well, the different departments here. So I put a couple of specific programs in here. So where we might not be well-versed in how we'll be using the program, we make sure that it's working for everyone when they need it. So as far as assessments go for teaching and learning, we roster AIM's Web and ClassLink. It rosters branching minds, which we're using in, also in ClassLink. The NWA map test, we actually load that for map testing. It's actually something that I work on to make sure then that all of our students can take the map testing. And Mentum is something new that we started this year. Our high school students are using it and our elementary school students will be using it. That's rostered. Envision Math is another new program this year that our students use ClassLink to access. And then just the classroom technology for students and teachers to make sure that we have that available. For wellness, there's Ripple Effects, which is a program that the high school uses. And we have PDIS Rewards, which is a, a program that all of our elementary school teachers use. Um, and then facilities and, facilities and then learning resources. The network equipment and making sure that we're keeping everything up to date and make sure that we're forward-thinking. Um, we've tried to keep a five-year plan, whether it's just for Chromebooks, maybe computers, but then there's these big systems that we, that Dr. Reynolds was even starting to talk about. You know, we have the network equipment, we have the wireless system, we have security systems. We have different systems that we need to make sure we keep thinking forward ahead of time when things are going to start being replaced by when we actually made these purchases. Um, and then iPads and Chromebooks, keeping those up to date. So one of the things that is actually in the strategic plan is to do a network evaluation. And that's one of the things that we did last year. Now, it was a very large document. It did a lot of things for us. Um, May 3rd, we had, uh, some of the recommendations and presentations. They did wireless surveys of our school buildings based on where our access points are in all of our buildings. They looked at some of our policies, our procedures for handling things, the way we use SchoolDude to manage problem tickets. They looked at our network equipment, they looked at our phone system, they looked at security to our, our server rooms. So some, these are a few points that I'm going to mention today and there are other ones out there. They really recommended that we expand two-form factor authentication to all of our network equipment. We changed everybody last year painfully to having to have two-step to login your Google account. But we didn't have it in place for our network equipment or our servers. One of their suggestions was to increase security to all of our server rooms in the district with putting card readers, so you have records of who goes in and out. Um, improve some of our HVA systems in our middle school, Room 303. Um, sometimes it does get a little bit of warm in there, the HVA system doesn't always work really well. Um, so again, that's something we're going to have to put a little bit of money into because when the lobby passes, we won't have a new middle school immediately. So we're going to have to look at some of that stuff in the stopgap, stopgap measures. Um, continue to update all of our servers, uh, making sure that all of our system software is up to date so we can mitigate any vulnerabilities there might be, increasing training related to cybersecurity. So last year when I came, and I'm going to talk a little bit, some of these are related to strategic plan as well. Last year when I came, I talked about the projects that we had planned this year. Um, and what I've done is I've updated underneath it what we've done so far and related to the projects that we were planning for the school year. One of the things we were planning is for the high school was new network switches. So one of the things that we can apply for annually is E-Rate. And E-Rate, our discount is based on our free and reduced lunch model. And because we are, all of our students get free breakfast and lunch, um, we get the highest discount, which is an 85% discount. So the high school had the oldest network equipment of all of our school buildings. And as you can imagine, it has in some ways the most because it's the largest building. The network equipment to replace all the network switches, um, even the Performing Arts Center. We have two small closets in the Health and Design Building and we have one main closet in the main classroom building. The price of that equipment is over $236,000. Now, the way E-Rate works is we put out a Form 470, which is a big document. And that goes out there and it says that we would like to purchase Cisco equipment for this building. This is what we need, and then people bid on that. And then after we get all the bids, we look at them and compare them and evaluate them based on price, but also things like, are we familiar with the company? Have we worked with them before? Have they been responsible with us? And then based on that, um, we make a decision, we pick a vendor. And the district cost for all of that equipment is $41,000, $41,735.70. So that's our 15% of everything. Now, Cisco is very backward, still supply chain issues. They're supposed to be here in February. So the plan is we're switching it over to the high school, hopefully all of the high school over spring break. That's the plan in March, or beginning of April, I guess it is technically, where we're going to start setting up the equipment, but actually do the cutover over spring break. So hopefully everything comes in February like it's supposed to. Um, something else I talked about last year was additional cybersecurity procedures, such as the two-form, multi-form factor authentication. One of the things they talked about, the network, um, assessment that they did was, um, going ahead and adding some of these things, adding two-form authentication for our servers and all of the network switches that we have in the buildings. So what we did over the summer was we updated some of our storage in the middle school because, uh, that server farm needed larger storage. We updated some, all of our, all of, just a couple of our district servers. One we're waiting on because of a couple of different things. But then we purchased a program called Duo. And in combination with our network accounts, we now are able to set up two-form factor authentication. And this is, we're still in the process, it's, it's been a process getting it moved over, but it will be done shortly, where now we will have two-form factor authentication to log into any equipment, so that'll be documented. And it's just another layer of safety, so that's something we talked about last year that's still in process, but we're working on it. Um, one of the things I said was we're replacing additional security cameras. You know, we were using some of the Essar funds to replace some of our older security cameras. We've been doing that, um, in some ways as things break. As you might imagine, we've been replacing less cameras at the middle school. But we do have to balance that between locations that need more coverage. Or maybe when cameras go down, we just had an old analog camera go down that I did a purchase order today for, to replace. So we're, we're trying to make sure that we replace cameras, you know, and we've been able to use that because it's safety and security. End-of-life Chromebooks. Um, with E-Rate, during the pandemic, they came out with emergency connectivity funding, funds for two years we were able to apply for. And it had to do with student devices and it also had to do with student connectivity. So one of the things we did do is we purchased hotspots for our families, um, that we can loan, be loaned out to them. And we could use it for student devices. So we looked at the devices that were end-of-life, coming up for the school year, which was about 601. And we would apply for $239,000 worth of Chromebooks. And I've never done a purchase order, ever, more probably will I, that was $0. We got $100,000 in coverage for those Chromebooks that we just finished setting up. The team, Jim, Tim and Jeff and Larry, who's not here right now, they're not here. Um, and, uh, they're actually in the middle school right now. Well, they've been everywhere, depending where the need was, but a lot of them are going in the middle school, so that was pretty cool. Um, yeah, it's a good thing, it's an exciting thing. Um, so the other thing that we talked about last year was replacing teacher desktops with laptops for more mobility. You know, when the pandemic hit, we gave our teachers Chromebooks to work from home and it worked. But really, you know, we wanted, we didn't, we typically had a desktop model in our classrooms. A lot of our specialized teachers had laptops and their administrators had laptops, but not our classroom teachers. So we were able to purchase, um, using Essar funds, laptops. They have five-year warranties that includes accidental damage as well. Um, and this summer, docs were installed. We connected the laptops to them. We left an additional monitor and then we also connected it to the classroom computers, a humongous project. So that was another big thing that that one is actually done. Um, the new copier contract that, um, Mr. Saluka's office negotiated with, with ComDoc. We've worked with them for a lot of years and it, other than the copiers were delayed. Um, as they, as they had them, they were letting us know and Jim worked with them a lot to make sure that they were put in place and swapped out pretty much, pretty flawlessly. So, um, I believe we actually have them all now. I think we have all the new copiers and they've been put in place already. So Cisco Phone System, one of the things that were found out in the network evaluation was that, So Cisco phone system, one of the things that were found out in the network evaluation was that, and we knew this, that some of the servers, the servers that we had for our phone system were reaching end-of-life. We needed to do some upgrades for our server software, which when we did those upgrades, we're going to force the phones at Maple Leaf and Elmwood to no longer work. And the wireless phones that we have in the district, we don't have a lot of them, but we have about 22. Those would be obsolete also. So we were stuck at upgrading software, upgrading hardware. If one we upgraded, it's the classroom phones in Elmwood and Maple Leaf are the ones that would stop working. So we actually work with Connect and DataServe is another company where we are going to virtualize our servers so they no longer become hardware-based at our expense. They're going to get moved to Connect because they'll be offsite. And now they're going to make sure that we're always staying upgraded in all of our software. So again, it's a timing thing. All the phones have been ordered. And in January, we're giving them a list of who's getting a new phone. And in January, they're going to configure them ahead of time. So the rollout and placing them in the classrooms, it will work with our current version of software. So we're going to place the phones, then we're going to do the cutover after hours. And that equipment then is also going to be managed by Connect. And we still have access to do moves, adds, and changes and to be able to work with the system. But that's happening in January. E-Rate, so some things that are coming down the pipe for next year. Obviously, Dr. Reynolds just talked about doing a facility audit, which is a great idea. And these technology systems are all part of that in school buildings. But something that definitely has to be done, and we did wait one more year to do it, is the district wireless system. It's six years old and in wireless that's all. And, you know, we, we've gotten, it doesn't owe us a thing. It's an Aruba system. We're eligible for 85% discount, although you get so many dollars of E-Rate. So we don't quite have enough to cover the entire system, but we have enough to at least cover half of it. So we'll be eligible for the 15% discount. But right now, the bids are going to be going out soon. We haven't done the 470 yet for that. But we work with an E-Rate consultant that helps us with all that paperwork. Network switches, there are a few switches at the middle school that need to be replaced and updated in some of the wiring closets. Not a lot, but again, you know, these would be things that could be used elsewhere in our school district when we build our new middle school. End-of-life, June 2024, we have 350 Chromebooks that will reach end-of-life in June. So again, that's something out there that's, you know, definitely on the radar. And then that brings us to EMIS. So as I mentioned, Kevin Sparks joined us in March after our EMIS supervisor went for Lawrenceville. And now we have Dr. Reynolds from Lawrenceville, so that's kind of interesting. But I asked Kevin to come and talk a little bit about, I'm going to say a couple of things about this too, about, you know, people hear the word EMIS and what does that mean and what kinds of things that he works on. So we'll go ahead and let him go ahead and start and I'll pull up his presentation.
And President and Vice President, Ms. Morrison, Dr. Reynolds, ladies and gentlemen. I didn't know I was going to have applause, so I'm nervous. Okay. Are you ready? Okay. Go ahead.
So. Yeah, okay. One of the things that, so when our EMIS supervisor went to Lawrenceville, I started really working on it. I worked on a lot of things in this, but I really started working a lot of things in this. And one of the things that some of the great EMIS minds in the area talked about is data collaboration and data quality. And I thought that was hugely important. I know Dr. Reynolds is a huge data guy. But really, when you talk about submitting all of our information to the state, because ultimately that's where it goes, it talks about the quality of the data. And there's a large circle in the middle, which is actually all the different systems where we submit it. But all the different shapes on the outside, they are the different people in our district where we pull this data from. So when you talk about data quality and we're talking about, let's say, attendance of students, that starts from our attendance clerks and our attendance secretaries in our building. So when the quality starts there, when the information is pulled and submitted, then what we're submitting to the state, there's the quality there. With student assessments, with our staff and making sure that they have the appropriate license. There's a lot of different groups in here with special education reporting. So in that and on your charts that you have, you see names that are connected with them. Because it takes everybody to make sure our data is accurate. So we have to make sure that when we're now talking to all the people in central office and all the people that work in our school buildings, I think data quality sounds better than EMIS because I think everybody understands quality a little bit better. So everybody outside is doing all the work. And really, the EMIS coordinator, which is Kevin, is pulling all that together, submitting it to the state, checking for errors and then going back and looking, you know, with the different various departments to see why the errors are there, sending submissions again, collecting the errors and making sure that things are correct. So really, that's a lot of his role. Not that he's not actually working on some of the details of the work, but it's the collecting and submitting. So I wanted to talk about that and then I'll let him go.
Thank you. I'll back up on it. Thank you. Pardon me. Yeah. What is EMIS? EMIS. I tossed that out, I forgot to delete it, I'm sorry. But it's, it's Education Management Information System. It's basically simply a statewide database, okay? It's for, it's what ODE uses for districts to report students, staff, financial, building data, district data. It's just a huge data warehouse machine that takes the gobbledygook that ODE tries to communicate and how we need to do the data so that it can be spoken in regular language to the district so that everybody understands what the expectations are for the most part. All right, the role of an EMIS coordinator. Basically, a liaison between the district and ODE. So we're providing, EMIS coordinators are provided with EMIS manuals that are highly technical engineering-type manuals that if you can't sleep, I'll send you one and put you right on. But in there are, to read between the lines, there is information that explains, all right, what are you asking for and how do we need to put that in? We pretty much know what data they want. It's in what format do you want to see it? And that's where I try to figure that out and make sure that everybody that's putting the data in or managing the data and like from the department has, understand what the expectations are as well. Unfortunately, sometimes things change so fast that we don't know until the last minute. But that's where everybody's been, you know, usually great and just adapting and moving on. EMIS communicates or communicates requirements, again, to staff within the district. So basically, just the diagram below is basically just very simply how it all goes together. All right, EMIS coordinator roles and essential skills, not going to go over them, but it's really just for your understanding, you know, and your reading. The roles of the EMIS coordinator, they're all over the place. In my opinion, I do whatever needs to be done to get the data to ODE to make them happy. Okay, that's basically my, my interest and my goals. The essential skills, there's a lot of training because there's a lot of changes. I think this year so far, there's been over 70 different reporting changes in this reporting year that we have to keep up to speed on, you know, obviously too much. So they were nice enough to create a website that we could go and refer to as those happen. A lot of meetings, a lot of training, a lot of repetition. Because even though we may do these from year to year, we only do it once and then it's another year before you've done it again and you need to get refreshed. So people like our ITC Connect offer outstanding training, you know, just from people that are knowledgeable and skillful. I wouldn't be able to do anything in my job without some of the expertise of those people. And ODE offers so much information for EMIS coordinators, not like it was in the past. So we have ready access to a lot of information with it. Okay, EMIS data collection calendar. That little guy in the rights kind of when I first got into this and I saw that, I was kind of couldn't believe it. There's a lot, there's a lot of collection windows. And basically what these are are different periods of the year where we collect, you know, we got to collect student information all year, but staff information, financial information, assessments, data. And they provide us with opening, closed dates and a lot of times those change. See that gray shaded area, it's just where they, they have to make adjustments and change. So that's pretty much the entire year. There's about 35 or 36 and I think EMIS, as far as what I do, is involved with about 25 of them. A lot of it, Mr. Sluka does with the financials, you know, is that. And some of those pertain specifically to community schools, right? For the most part, go ahead. So that's why EMIS never stops, right? It's all year round, there's no EMIS holiday, though we're lobbying for one. Just to have one day to rest, but really fun. I mean, it is a lot, but there's a lot of support that goes along to help you get through that. It's just, you know, there's an old saying, eat an elephant one bite at a time. It's kind of the way you do it. You just take what you can do and do your best. There's always at least one collection open, so there's always something to do. It's one of the things I love about EMIS is that it always changes and there's, you know, I never come to work thinking, gee, what am I going to do today? I have plenty, I have plenty to do, so, and I, it makes work fun. But it takes a village. And again, what Sheri was going over in the beginning with the collaboration circle, it starts with the superintendent, Dr. Reynolds, and as he was talking about. The accuracy of data is so important because he needs to make decisions based off of the information that he's getting from reports that we provide. And if it's not accurate, he's not going to be able to make solid plans and go in different directions. So the data is so important for it to be accurate for that reason for him, okay? Then to the data, you know, the, basically the data managers or the principals and the building heads, you know, they, they play such an important role and they've been so supportive. I mean, it's been incredible, the amount of support that they are, you know, but they have to make sure that data is being entered correctly and that they're communicating correctly to the office staff how to do that data, how to put it in, what's expected. And I work a lot with the building principals and I said they're very supportive and very anxious to do the right thing, to make sure that it gets right. And then the office staff, I don't, I can't say enough. I mean, they're, they're the unsung heroes. They really work hard doing a lot of different things and have welcomed me with open arms and have been instrumental in communicating to me how to communicate to them and how to work with them. It's fantastic. And they also are just very, all they're interested in is doing what is right and making it right and making it accurate. And they're a pleasure to work with. I have not met anybody yet that's been difficult in the building to work with. They're just all very welcoming. So you've got some really great people here. So this can, by my, it takes a village. I'm just the guy, you know, kind of spinning the dishes. These are the people that do the real work, you know, and the department heads, they do the real work. I'm just, just trying to make sure it all gets over there in the right way. So more credit to them than anything. That's, yeah, that's it. So thank you for your time and your support. Are there any questions? Do you have any questions?
Either one of us.
Either one.
Well.
Preferably Sheri, but.
All of them for you. Make you sweat. No, but thank you both for such a detailed report on where we at with technology. And again, technology is most definitely the foundation of our district. We can't do anything without our technology department up and running. Since last year, Sheri, I know we have new employees, but were you able to add to your team additional employees? Not just replace?
Not additional employees, but we, we, we had two people that retired. And then we had, we were able to hire network technicians opposed to technology assistants. And they were their 260 employees as opposed to the two people they replaced didn't work, did not work on summer. So we got more time, which is good, but it's still a lot. That's all I'll say about that. But they, they worked very hard and our two new employees are learning a lot. But you forget what you know and how long it takes to get people up to speed on what you know. Yeah.
So is there still an area that just as a board?
I think, I think it always could be an area. I think it certainly always could be an area that we have to look at. Yeah, I would say yes, but it's better.
Like I see with the amount of tickets, like at the middle school, for instance, it's almost, you know, like someone designated to the middle school.
Right, right.
Along like with what is our turnaround as far as ensuring that the technology is up and going? And do you have 100% goal? And do we have the manpower to make that happen?
We're trying to look at some of the things that are going on at the middle school to see if we can make some changes to help with that, you know? So we're actually talking to the teachers and talking to Mrs. Klautman and the administrators to see if we can make some changes there, to see if there's some things that we can do to help internally and right in the building. So that's what we're working on right now. But definitely will not say, will not be against having additional support for sure. I know they're probably listening to me back there going, what? Yes, yes, Sheri, say yes.
Yeah, because with our two new guys and the big hump that we're hitting right now, we did hit a big hump and we lost, you know, one of our guys lost for a while. And then we had people out for a while. So right now, we are catching up and getting up to speed. So it's hard to say if we're going to need extra people. I, I do feel like to get through this hump, we need two extra people.
Right.
But as she says, we are reworking the middle school, how we do things right now.
Yeah, they're going, you're going through all the.
Right, the guys and I are going through the carts. We got those brand-new Chromebooks set up in carts in all sixth grade. Has carts in their classrooms that will not leave the classroom.
Yeah, so we're working on kind of a new plan to help with the process of middle school.
New Chromebooks. But in the classroom, one point I did have is just about just the, the safety and security as it relates to the students utilizing the devices for non-academic purposes and ensuring that. So like my thought process behind it, because I've just seen the challenges with having students in the district. You guys do a great job with blocking stuff as it come along, but those kids are smarter and they kind of stay ahead. But when we, with them staying ahead, how do we, you know, stay ahead of them to ensure that we never compromise the safety of our buildings, that our students don't have access to anything, you know, teachers are teaching. So I just know as a parent, it's, it's a task, right? To monitor individual, just my small group of children, you know, and their activity on the internet. So just wondering like, you know, is there more we can do? Can we do more like parent education, student education about, you know, the risk? Or even, you know, tighten our disciplinary as it relates to, you know, violating and doing things on devices that you shouldn't be doing during instructional time? Because just the overall concern is just ensuring that we keep our students safe and we're not, they're not doing anything that can hinder us meeting our academic plan goals. Because we need them every minute focused on what's going on in the class and not on Roblox. And, and they got some stuff, they've figured out how to get through the system. And all you, middle schoolers, yes, Ms. Daniels is the one that called Sheri with what I found out y'all doing and.
It's a moving target, right? I mean, as soon as you find something that is a loophole, you close it. And, you know, that's what children do is try and find loopholes. GoGuardian has been an excellent product to work with as far as blocking things on keywords, blocking things on sites, blocking categories. I'd love to tell you it's 100% effective, but as you know, it's not 100% effective. So when you reached out to me, the teachers do the same thing. The thing, the couple of things that I like about GoGuardian is the teachers have the ability to look at their class on GoGuardian and they also can see some things. But that too sometimes can be a moving target where students may or may not be, then be able to be blocked right in the classroom because of some things that they're doing. So we're always trying to learn and we're always trying to figure it out. I definitely think you're absolutely right as far as educating the students. The technology classes, that's one of the places where we talk to students about that. But we have done some things in the past. The Ohio Task Force Against Crimes Against Children have done some training for parents. I know there's been some conversations about having the. I'd suggest that that would probably be another really great topic for that as far as educating parents, because especially today, I don't think you could be too, there's, there's not, you cannot know enough, especially with our students being on the technology that they're on, absolutely. But, we always try and block more things, you know, we do. So, I guess that's a thing to know.
I'm at home blocking too. We are blocking.
Yeah, we're all blocking.
But, I just want to make sure that we never, you know, that we don't, that we doing everything. I know GoGuardian, I felt like it was so much more effective when we were virtual, because the teachers were in front of the device at all times. So, they were able to kind of catch them and miss. But, now, you know, they, you know, they're doing other thi, you know, they're teaching a class. They're more interactive and not necessarily able to catch it. And just do we have, do we kind of do our principals or anybody kind of just jump in sometimes and randomly check on our students and do the students know? Because sometimes that accountability will have them think twice, you know, before they make those poor choices. Because at the end of the day, we do have rules and we do have expectations of our students. And the only reason we're facing this problem is because students are making choices not to adhere to our expectations and rules of the district. So, it's unfortunate that we have to look at these extra measures and have these concerns because we do have an expectation, but a lot of the students, including my children, are not following.
Well, I think that we do, there are alert mechanisms in GoGuardian that are set up to alert the building administration and the guidance counselors in every building. So, they do get an email with a student and then, you know, the sites that maybe were inappropriate, maybe they didn't get there, but they tried to get there. They did a search for some of these things. So, they do get alerts to that effect, which is a good thing.
Yes. I think you guys contact parents too, because I've got a few.
Oh, yes, yes.
To kind of keep you in the loop, be aware. If they're doing it at school, then they're likely doing it at home and other devices. And we do want to make sure that the kids are safe.
Yeah, absolutely.
And not.
And I don't think that's something that it's, it's always a high priority, really, because it won't ever change. You know, what they're doing might change and how they're doing it might change, but what we do to try and keep, keep them safe will always be a priority and evolve.
Yeah.
I just have one quick question for Sheri. The district wireless network.
Yes.
That we will have to replace.
Yes.
I know we will get the discount. Is there any, can you guesstimate about how much that?
Well, we have four hundred and, I guess, four hundred and seventeen access points in the entire district. Anywhere from five hundred dollars to a thousand, potentially. It's a cloud-based system, so we don't need a server to run it. That's an estimate. And we have about, I think we, we have about two hundred and eighty thousand dollars E-rate, E-rate monies available. So, it just depends how the prices come in. That's why it's a bidding process, which is a good thing.
And just thank you for all your work.
Oh, you're welcome. It's my pleasure.
Both of you and your hard work.
Our pleasure.
Keeping us safe and secure with our technology. I know there's, there was a college that, College of the Desert, they were hacked, they got everything up and going, they were hacked again. So, thank you very much for all that you do and just hats off. I've had some previous EMIS experience and. Is there any other questions?
If there's no other questions, thank you so much again for all you and your team do. And thank you guys for always just keeping us aggressive where we're at and just keeping our district, Sheri, ahead of the ball as it relates to technology. I mean, thanks to your forward thinking and your vision. When we had to go into the pandemic, we were prepared more than others. And I just even see these additional Chromebooks coming in and things of that sort where you're keeping us equipped and ready to make sure that they're, that our children are able to have access to education and just state-of-the-art, because technology is what they do enjoy. And that's a great way to engage our students academically. So, thank you guys for all that hard work.
Thank you.
Thank you. And you did a good job.
At this time, we are going to have recognitions and commendations. Dr. Reynolds?
Thank you. Tonight, we want to take a moment to celebrate Coach Sadi Johnson. From the time you played as a Bulldog and sent it to the heights, heights in this district, including Mr. Basketball and then playing at Division One college level and then returning to your alma mater. You've truly mentored others to follow into your footsteps, to exceed your expectations, to require hard work and integrity among the members of your basketball family and to make our community a better place. We honor you with a plaque for achieving this milestone of three hundred wins for your coaching career.
Thank you, sir. Thank you all. Thank you all so much. Oh, it means a lot, for real.
And any words behind the floor?
Well, what, staying here?
There you go. Yeah, you're good.
Got to get on my wife, mind, to me about why we're here today. She told me my son was getting an award. And then I saw his teacher here, so I was like, okay. I was like, okay, but I want to tell you, this means more to me than y'all. Y'all, well, I've been here eighteen years. And I try to not just do what I can for my basketball players, but the kids in the community or kids I run into. Because, you know, we deal with a lot of kids and different kids are brought up differently and just how we're just trying to, all of us are trying to help. And I'm going to continue with my mom, my mother here, okay? I want to say that first and foremost. My dad came to be here, he, he got some bad news for us, what he's going through right now with cancer and stuff, but I know my mom was going to be here and my, my, Miss Wannestock and my kids, my beautiful kids, my beautiful wife. I have to say her because she get mad at me. But, I want to say this. We are truly, this is, I love being here. I love the community, I love what I do. I love the impact that God has blessed me to be able to do. First of all, God, thank you, because honestly, let's be honest, I'm nothing without him. And honestly, his favor is everything. So, I thank God for that, first and foremost, the favor to be able to just be here this long, you know, and, and be here with y'all this long. You know, people don't last as long, but I'm enjoying what I do. I'm enjoying, hopefully, you know, just keeping the community together, any little part I can do. And just, I really just want to say from my heart, thank you all. This means more than you know to me, you know, this is, I don't ask for stuff, but just being here so long and being able to get something like this is truly grateful. So, love you all. I'm going to continue to go and go Bulldogs, all right?
Yes, yes. Oh, oh, the family?
I just want to thank Coach Johnson for everything that he's done. You know, I've been through two kids through the basketball system. You do some remarkable work with our scholars and the way that you work very hard to get them into college and get them to that next step. I enjoy getting my text messages with updates that you went to the movies and, you know, you are beyond just a basketball coach. You are a mentor and a positive role model for our, our scholars. Thank you, Mrs. Johnson.
I have the same sentiment that Ms. King. I mean, my daughter's at the high school, she doesn't play basketball, but she has a relationship with you. She really enjoys, you know, and I've watched how you mentor those boys and just any of students. And you're just such a blessing to us in this district.
Thank you, God bless you. You know, during my board president report, but I just want to thank you for the impact that you're not just making on our students, you know, we're acknowledging you today for the work you're doing for our students, but you actually touch through this nationwide. The work, the ball does not just stop for our students, but you allow it to dribble from community to community, state to state, and you are making an impact nationwide, and that's a big deal. And we appreciate that that ball is starting here and out of our community in Garfield Heights. There's a lot of great things and great people that are giving and pouring into the communities, not just ours, but others. And we don't take enough time to have those discussions. It's not just the game that you're teaching the kids, but you're teaching them how to change the game, change the game of their life, especially in this inner city and our urban kids, showing them that it's bigger than the ball, but this is where it can start. So, you're teaching them very attributes that we need in our community. So, I thank you, I thank you not for just our students, but the impact that you're making nationwide. And we are glad here in the city of Garfield Heights that we can be the home for you developing our students, not just young men, but young women too. And we appreciate that and may God continue to bless you and your gift. But, you just got to commit to keeping the ball, staying here and playing. We gonna block you. So, we appreciate you. You guys are like family. The whole Johnson family actually made a huge impact. It's just, he's just one of the seeds of a phenomenal family in our community that goes above and beyond to make an impact. So, thank you for all you're doing.
Are you all coming around too, or? I think the school board also wants a picture.
Hey, seriously.
Family?
My family, thank you all. No, I, I've been here a long time. So, I appreciate you all so much.
Thank you for sharing. The last baby you had on the board.
There you go, there you go, perfect. Okay, now I can see everybody.
Oh, my fault, my brother, my ace, I'm so sorry. You're right.
Get out on that court and he push you back.
Yes, you're right. Oh, my brother, I'm, bro, I'm so sorry. He been here with me day one.
How many wins are his?
A lot of them. Probably, probably about two hundred of them. So, he make me look good.
I want to thank everybody for everything you said about my son, because it meant so much to me. I mean, he's an amazing guy and he right, it's just not about ball for him, getting kids in college. We know a lot of coaches, different things that don't do half the stuff that he do. And I just want to thank you for taking this time out to acknowledge, not just that, but the things you said meant more to me than even that. So, thank you so much.
Thank you all so much.
You guys are more than welcome to stay for the rest of the meeting or?
At this time, we are going to have our school attendance report. Dr. Reynolds?
Thank you, Madam President. For everyone's knowledge, I begin my report by reminding our school family that winter break began today, Monday, December nineteenth, runs to Tuesday, January third. Please mark your calendars and enjoy your time away from, from school with family, friends, and loved ones and save and joyful memory. The month of December is a special time in Garfield High City Schools. Inspiring performances, heartwarming acts, generosity and goodwill, and continued interpersonal growth and initiatives and more characterizes this past month. First, as a way for our school family to spread festive holiday cheer, our family and community engagement team did a great job of entertainment, supplying toys and refreshments and coordinating our special, our special guest visit, may or may not be around, during our winter wonder, Wonderland event held last week. Our district will continue to be a safe place for families and children to grow and this event represents such an opportunity. One important initiative that demonstrates the Garfield High City Schools dedication to innovation and technology, along with student academic growth, took place this month at Elmwood. Since last year, students became heroes for several, with several other schools in the state of Ohio as Heroes League Online Life Skills Learning Platform kicked off its two thousand, two thousand and three statewide competition as a pilot program. Promoting skills as leadership, entrepreneurship, problem-solving, digital literacy, personal finance, and others. The Heroes League will be available for students in Maple Leaf and William Foster in the near future. And all of our elderly students will have the opportunity to get involved in this program, which early results are showing that more time spent on Heroes League game is improving performance in classrooms and on test scores. This is exciting and more to come. Also, early this month, Mr. Pernard and eighty-five students from the varsity choir, freshman choir, and Music Express entertained male birth and a room full of senior citizens at the Center. Simply put, everyone loved the performance. Last month, about sixty senior citizens attended the Center for Performance Arts to see Mr. Benjamin's Theater Department prepare for their fall play. We are positively engaged in community in so many ways and it's wonderful to see. And as I've had, I've said so many times, we are in this together. So, every chance we have to take the talents of our students out of the community, we will do so. And in closing, going now, we are here to honor head coach Sadi Johnson, recently winning his three-hundredth career game as a coach here at his alma mater. And while his accomplishments in basketball speaks for themselves, as he's built a successful program that's very successful in the state of Ohio, he prides himself on helping student athletes advance to college and has secured scholarships for various Division One, Division Two, and Division Three schools for more than seventy student athletes during his tenure. His positively shaped, helped shape the future of our players and become meaningful members. and become meaningful members of the gray society. Coach Johnson, congratulations to your successes and for achieving this milestone. And as I close, I wish you all, Garfield Heights City School family, a blessed holiday season and enjoyable winter break. Thank you for the privilege to serve as your superintendent.
Thank you, Dr. Reynolds. Is there any questions regarding Dr. Reynolds' report this evening? If there's no questions, we'll go to our next item on our agenda this evening, which is remarks from the public regarding agenda items. Do we have anybody signed up regarding the agenda items?
Yes, it is an agenda item.
What is an agenda item? Okay, I guess it is an agenda item.
Even though he's not here, I'm still doing it anyway. Do you only want to start 109 or 500, you have me?
Do I need to read the guidelines for public comments?
No, I know. I know. Sure you're gonna... Thank you. Hold on, more than three minutes. No, I know. He's gonna check about three minutes. "I heard through my little grapevine that Sonny's going to be recognized this evening. Since I was not sure what was going to be said about him, I felt compelled to share a few of my thoughts on the man with the tremendous 300 basketball game wins achievement. Sonny is far more than an accomplished and revered basketball coach, and it was important for me to share with that with all of you here tonight. In addition, I never want to miss an opportunity to talk about Johnson. I first met Sonny when he was in high school. When he initially came to Garfield Heights High School, I never really knew him, but I was certainly well aware of all the hype that surrounded the eventual Ohio basketball recipient due to his beyond impressive talent on a basketball court. What I do remember very vividly is how in awe I was of the fact that he never let all the attention he received define who he was as a person. When Sonny was a senior, I had a student who was very sick as he was afflicted with sickle cell anemia. Suffice it to say, he idolized Sonny. During that same year, I was asked to chair a committee on behalf of the Cleveland Food Bank's Power is Running Your Food Drive. We did a play in front of... Oh, I decided to come up with a rather elaborate skit that would incorporate both Little Chucky and Sonny. We did a play in front of all three of our elementary schools. First stop was Maple Leaf. Imagine this. We announced we had brought Sonny with us. The crowd erupts and out comes just a little over four feet tall Chucky. The crowd gasped, yet within a few seconds, out comes Sonny and the crowd of kids went absolutely crazy. It was then that pure magic took place. Because unscripted by me, instead of Sonny basking in the glory of this line light, which was his, he threw the ball to Little Chucky. He gave this frail little student of mine the chance to experience what he could have never, ever before ever imagined, which was positive attention and enthusiasm. In all honesty, Chucky was never the same after this, as his level of self-confidence and self-esteem quite frankly skyrocketed. That was Sonny's effect on others when he was just a teenager. It was at that moment I saw firsthand how very special Sonny was. Fast forward to about 20 years ago, when I had the good fortune to bear witness to the enormity of Sonny's appeal. I had gotten into a car accident and an insurance rep came to the high school to assess the damage to my car. Out of the car steps a little old man, had to have been in his 80s. Before he even said one word to me, he looked at the high school building and then turned to me and said, "Isn't this where Sonny Johnson works?" I just smiled in response and out of my head, yes. Sonny's impact on others has continued through the many years he has coached in this district. He could have had the opportunity to go anywhere, and he chose us. Never was it more apparent than just a few weeks ago this season. The opponent was Cleveland Heights. I've worked our games for the better part of over 20 years, and I do not recall ever not having some alteration during that matchup. This season was different as Sonny was able to, prior to the game, and if you were there, you saw it, was able to silence a crowd, which was no small feat, I might add. And he shared his thoughts from his huge heart related to behavioral expectations he opened to throughout the course of the game. When he finished speaking, I turned to the policeman standing next to me and I said very calmly, "We're not gonna have any problems tonight." The cop looked at me in disbelief, but my words rang true all evening long. Not even one altercation. Why? The answer is simple. Sonny's influence. Without being disrespectful to anyone else that was there this evening, this is the reason why we were all safe that night, and students are still talking about it. Looking at the gate, it was like a who's who of Sonny's former players, various coaches from the area, and most importantly of all, Sonny's huge, supportive, and most loving family. No one there was willing to risk a problem resulting in not being able to enjoy watching Sonny coach his boys. That's right, his boys. I would be remiss if I did not also take this opportunity to let you all know that Sonny's been far more than a coach throughout his entire career. He has seen, as we've talked about, basketball and scholarships. He, if it's through his eyes to go to college, he will find a way, regardless of how talented they are on the basketball court. He has been his players' number one advocate, and not many coaches can say that. Sonny has always been about kids, and that is not true, not just due to the person he is, it is also due to how he's raised. A lot of people don't know this, but Sonny's dad was also a coach in our district. Sonny has not just been a second father to the master jury of players, but in many cases, he has been the only dad they have ever known. This is perhaps the easiest role for him, as he has learned from the best. Next to my own beloved dad, I honestly do not know any better dad, any dad better than his. I firmly believe that Sonny's family values and recognition of the important role his entire family plays in his life is the biggest reason why he has achieved so much success as a coach. As a coach, he's learned from the best. I'm so happy and truly grateful to this Board of Education, Dr. Reynolds and Mr. Hurt, for recognizing Sonny in this form, especially since it's never been done before. I'm also happy that you can now see what those of us that have had the good fortune to know for decades and that it's very how special Sonny really is. Congratulations, Sonny. You've won not just 300-plus games, but also the admiration and respect of countless number of other people, including you. That concludes my little round.
Thank you, Mrs. Reynolds. Thank you. Was there any other?
Not for the agenda.
Thank you.
At this time, can I have a motion to approve financial agenda items 9.1 and 9.2 as presented on tonight's agenda?
So moved. Second. Is there any discussion? Mr. Saluka, is there anything you'd like to highlight relative to items 9.1 and 9.2 from the board?
Mostly item 9.2 is that we need to tell the county auditor that we want to participate in this advanced program of the property taxes for the next calendar year. And we have to do that by the board approving that. As far as the financial statement, I'll have a better handle on that at the end of the half a year, and I'll be more in-depth reporting in January.
If there's no other questions or discussion relative to items 9.1 and 9.2 as presented, Mr. Saluka, that was moved by Ms. King and second by Ms. Morrison. Can I have roll call, please?
Ms. King?
Yes.
Ms. Morrison?
Yes.
Mrs. Daniels?
Yes.
At this time, can I have a motion to approve board agenda item 10.1 and 10.2 as presented on tonight's agenda?
So moved.
Second. And is there any discussion? If there's no discussion, Mr. Saluka, that was moved by Ms. Morrison and second by Ms. King. Can I have roll call, please?
Ms. Morrison?
Yes.
Ms. King?
Yes.
Mrs. Daniels?
Yes.
Madam President, at this time, I need to point out that we need to table resolution 10.3. As we do not have enough numbers here to pass that resolution, we need a majority of the board, which takes four members, to pass this resolution. So we need to table it and set up a future meeting so we can get this passed by January 4th and have at least four members of the board in attendance.
Is it tabling or amending the agenda to remove this item?
I think we need to table it, just because it's already here. We're gonna table it to a future meeting. So I think we need to take a motion to table to a future meeting.
Can I have a motion to table agenda item 10.3 to a future meeting for the reasons as stated by Mr. Saluka?
Just, okay, I'll explain it after a little second.
So moved. Second.
After sitting in here, I texted our attorney, Rick Manteloff, and I said, "Can we pass?" I was just, wanted to make sure at three or four, we didn't pass this type of resolution. And during the meeting, he texts him back and said, "Unfortunately, you need a majority of the board, which is the four members." So he reiterated that we need to pass this and get it down to the Ohio Department of Education and the Ohio Department of Transportation by January 4th. So my suggestion is that we could schedule a meeting either later this week or early next week, which is like a Tuesday, to get at least four members here to pass this. We can get it down to the county fiscal officer, get the necessary financial information, and then get that filed with the Ohio Department of Taxation and the Ohio Department of Education. So I'm looking at, you know, calendars. I should take only about five minutes to pass this so we can maybe do a quick lunch meeting, early lunch meeting, or early morning first thing meeting, whatever everybody's schedule is looking like. And we just need another, just one more board member to be able to get there.
Open. I'm open. I'm open also. So Mr. Saluka, if you can reach out to the other two board members to just see what their availability is, and then we can schedule...
Would December 27th at around 11:00 or noon work for everybody?
I would just need to be out by 1:00. I have a doctor's appointment.
I think we should be out by 12:15.
Anything before or after that.
I will reach out to other board members if we go with that one to reschedule that and get the special meeting.
Yes.
Okay.
Is there any other questions or discussion? If there's no other questions and discussion, Mr. Saluka, can I have roll call, please?
Ms. King?
Yes.
Ms. Morrison?
Yes.
Mrs. Daniels?
Yes.
Can I have a motion to approve and waive the reading of personnel agenda items 11.1 through 16.1 as presented? Hold on, 11.1.
I'm sorry, 15.1.
Through 15.1.
I was getting ahead of myself there in this summary.
Can I have a motion to approve personnel agenda items 11.1 through 15.1 as presented?
So moved.
Second. And is there any discussion? If there's no discussion, Mr. Saluka, the motion to approve and waive personnel agenda items 11.1 through 15.1 as presented in tonight's agenda was moved by Ms. Morrison and second by Ms. King. Can I have roll call, please?
Ms. Morrison?
Yes.
Ms. King?
Yes.
Mrs. Daniels?
Yes.
No action on 16.1. Tonight is the first reading of the board policies. Have we got any feedback or anything relative to them at all? To?
No. This is the second reading.
Second reading. I do have, can I make comments here?
Yes.
Just, and just two, or three suggestions that I wanted to bring. I didn't want to just send to Sean because I wanted the board's input and thought. And on 2260, the curriculum A, it talks about review current and proposed courses of study and textbooks to detect any bias based upon the protected classes, ascertaining whether or not supplemental materials seemingly are taken as a whole fairly depict the contribution of both genders. Can we change it to all genders? So it's not just male, female, but it includes all genders or something of that nature? So it's not binary? That's was my suggestion for that. And then also, there's several places throughout where it talks about equal access. And I think we may want to look at putting equitable access because everyone having the same equal access doesn't always meet their needs, and they may need more. So there may be places where we have equal access that we may want to say equitable access. And then also, I would like to recommend for 3216 and 1616, it talks about the dress code for staff. It states that it needs to be consistent with professional responsibilities. I think we need to be a little more specific because I think it needs to be a little more specific on the dress code in terms of length of skirts, the types of material, jeans versus non-games, that sort of thing in our teacher dress code. And that's all I had that I wanted to just bring to the board's attention for consideration on revisions or adaptation to some policies. So Sean, any suggestions? We just kind of take them back into the policy committee, make sure legal looks them over, and then make the recommendations from there, correct?
Yeah, so once, like, was the board, anything, once you approved on the final reading in January, then any revisions, we can take it back to you all and make the adjustments from there?
So thank you. Any input relative to the recommendations from the board members relative to the items?
I'd like the changes that Ms. King recommended.
Thank you, Ms. Morrison. And thank you, Ms. King, for your review and making those recommendations. And we'll be sure that we filter those through the policy committee.
Thank you.
The next item on our agenda, can I have a motion to approve contract agenda items? A motion to approve and waive the reading of contract agenda items 17.1 through 17.4 as presented on tonight's agenda?
So moved. Second.
And is there any discussion relative to these items? If there being no discussion, Mr. Saluka, that was moved by Mrs. King, second by Ms. Morrison. Can I have roll call, please?
Ms. King?
Yes.
Ms. Morrison?
Yes.
Mrs. Daniels?
Yes.
Can I have a motion to approve and waive the reading of miscellaneous agenda item 18.1 and 18.2 as presented on tonight's agenda?
So moved.
Second. And is there any discussion?
Yeah, just following up on the donation to the Anthony Regario Scholarship. This was a donation from his wife in support of his scholarship that was established upon his passing a couple of years ago. And they've been raising money, and it's a very fitting tribute to Anthony Regario and the Regario family, that she wants to keep this scholarship going. And she sees the value of what it is to our students. And so I think it's a very generous donation. I will be writing a letter of thank you to her so she would have that to support the donation and the acceptance of the board.
Thank you, Mr. Saluka. Just on behalf of the Board of Education, we are extremely grateful for the generosity of the family and them investing in our students through this scholarship. So we thank them, and their generosity is truly appreciated. And we appreciate their persistency with impacting the students in our district.
And the letter will reflect that appreciation from the board and Dr. Reynolds and their support.
Yes, we, this is...
Yes, we impact that this donation has on our students.
It's phenomenal. Madam President? Ms. King? I have a question in regards to the graduation seals, just to make sure I'm understanding. I have a question in regards to the graduation seals, just to make sure I'm understanding. So the three seals that, um, you're asking us to approve is community service, fine arts, and student engagement. Those are alternative pathways to student graduation?
I won't say alternative pathways, but it's a part of the graduation required for them to have at least two of the seals.
Okay.
We're creating three additional seals to.
Give them more.
More opportunities.
Got it. Okay. That's what I wanted to include in there. Thank you. Where can any of our students have access to all the seals that are available to our students?
That's what we're going to, to make sure we have all of the, all of the, uh, seals.
Like if I wanted to see all the seals that my student could possibly earn or where do you find that? Is that on the website? Or do your student go to their guidance counselor and get that information?
Well, currently, I'm not sure if they have access to them, but I'll make sure that they do.
Okay. So how many seals do we have right now? We're approving three. Is this, we only have three or is this three additional?
Yeah, three is the max. So there's state-developed seals and locally-developed seals. And for the locally, you can have up to three. And so we did all three of them. This is what's the guidelines outlined from the state. So we went and had them developed all three of them just so that we could get as many kids to demonstrate readiness as possible.
And they start working on these seals in the ninth grade?
Yes.
Okay. So do we like start introducing the concept to our eighth graders to prepare them for the pathway? Like, how do we start that conversation or haven't worked that out yet?
Joe, we started in ninth grade, at ninth grade, Joe. But if that's something, there, there's a couple of programs that we're actually working with. GCC is one of the programs that actually starts at sixth grade, which will help us with pushing kids to more somewhere, have seals and pathways. It is a program that, that basically, um, exposes kids to different careers and opportunities and includes activities that can include, um, internships and apprenticeships. So we're starting that. That is something that's being headed by, um, Mr. Townsend at the high school. He's leading that effort. But we think that will, will help us as well.
Okay. Cause I'm just thinking like, you know, as they are preparing their ninth grade, um, schedule in the eighth grade, um, some of these seals are closely aligned to curriculum. And so just the kids kind of knowing the pathway encounters, so we're not kind of spinning our wheels so they can get the most bang for the buck. Or if they're going into the arts, just really going, or if they're on defense, knowing that this can benefit them, you know, and, you know, where the benefits lie so they can see the full benefits as they're preparing for their high school career and that can support our students and possibly if they're, they have access to this in middle school as they're planning, because they start to plan their ninth grade schedule in middle school. And maybe that planning sheet can say, A, this will, these classes will set you along the path of this field and these classes will set you along the path of that field. That way we can streamline our students, you know, to successfully, you know, just, just a thought. I'm just thinking like, is what I would need as a parent or discussions I would want to have with my kid going into the ninth grade, knowing that they need to accomplish these seals and the more that they can get, do it duly while they're doing their academics would be better for me. So maybe that's just the personal sidebar. If there's no other discussion, Mr. Saluka, that was moved by Ms. Morrison and second by Ms. King. Can we have roll call, please?
Ms. Morrison?
Yes.
Ms. King?
Yes.
Mrs. Daniels?
Yes.
Our next item on tonight's agenda is remarks from the public regarding miscellaneous school items. And we have one person here this evening and that is Ms. Crystal Attaberry. And, um, Ms. Attaberry, I'm going to read our policy relative to, um, public participation at board meetings. All board meetings of the board and board-appointed committees are open to the public. In order for the board to fulfill obligation to complete the planned agenda in an effective and efficient fashion, a maximum of thirty minutes of public participation may be permitted at each meeting. Each person addressing the board should give his name, his or her name and address. If several people wish to speak, each person is allotted three minutes until the total time of thirty minutes is used. During the period, no person may speak twice until all who desire to speak have had the opportunity to do so. Persons designing more time should follow the procedure of the board to be placed on the regular agenda. The period of public participation may be extended by a vote of the majority of the board present in voting. Agendas are available to all those who attend board meetings. The section of the agenda for public participation shall be indicated. Noted at the bottom of each agenda shall be a short paragraph outlining the board's policy on public participation at board meetings. Ms. Attaberry, you can address the board and welcome to tonight's board meeting.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
If you can confirm your, um, your address for me, please?
Sure. It is one, two, two, one, zero, Woodward Boulevard in Garfield.
Thank you, Ms. Attaberry.
Um, thank you for hearing me out, um, this evening. My name is Crystal Attaberry and I am a parent here in Garfield at the middle school as well as the high school. I have four children in this district. My first daughter, she graduated in two thousand twenty-one, um, from the high school. And I have a eleventh grader right now that's at the high school and I have a seventh grader at the middle school. And in August, I will be having a kindergarten in the elementary. My children, when I started off in Garfield because of the reputation that was in Garfield, um, I was scared to put them in Garfield. The only thing that was going for Garfield that I heard positive was the basketball team. And now I see why. So, um, I hate to come to the meeting with the gloom and doom after such a positive meeting, but, um, my daughter has been experiencing bullying very bad at Garfield Middle School. And it started off at William Foster in fifth grade. And, um, I am that type of parent that's very much engaged. I, I speak all the time. I try to encourage our children in this community all the time, whether it's on my street or if I go to a local store or if I just show up at the schools, you know? I'm that type of parent that if I see a child doing something wrong, I'm going to say something, you know? Because like he said, it takes the village, you know? I have no problem with being a village, being a part of a village because our children are our future. And my daughter doesn't feel like she has a future. My daughter constantly asks me, am I worthy to live? Cause her peers at the school tell her to kill herself. She is being bullied constantly. And me as a parent, I didn't have enough. I didn't have enough. I have led school. I have led leadership in school. I have been gaslighted twenty-four, seven about what they're going to do, the mediations and we're going to come together. I give out my number, email address, everything to parents that are involved with their kids that are involved with this bullying and get nothing, nothing. I get a whole bunch of, oh, we're going to call, we're going to get together, we're going to do this and we're going to do that. And I'm the only one that's being a stalker. I'm the only one that's reaching out. I'm the only one that's saying, hey, what can we do to get our kids to feel safe in school? What can we do to bring our kids together and just talk and see, use their words and knock their hands? What can we do to make our kids that are actually understanding the assignment of going to school feel safe to go to school? I have A and B students in Garfield, you know, and they don't want to go to school. They'd be like, Ma, I don't want to go to school today because such and such is talking about me. Such and such follows me to the bathroom. Such and such does this. And me as a mother, I'm like, okay, well, I'll go to school with you. But they don't want the parents in school. I'm constantly being told to go to the police station, come to the board of education, go to superintendent, do this, we don't involve this. And I'm tired. My daughter goes to therapy now because she, her mental is telling her she's not worthy to even be in society. She gets cyberbullied through the, um, links, the, um, bulldog emails and stuff. That was a big thing in sixth grade for her. I've worked with the principals constantly, sending them examples of emails she was getting while they were in virtual school. Like, oh Dakota, you look ugly today. Oh, you look like this today. Because they're looking on camera, they're in virtual schooling and these are the little sidebars that she getting through emails. And then they went as far as jumping her. She can't even walk. She can't walk. We stayed literally two minutes from the middle school. She can walk, but she can't now because she get jumped on the way to school. She get jumped on the way from school. And the school tells me, oh, whilst they leave the property, that's not on us. But then I come to find out, yeah, it is on me. So I get lied to. I'm just a parent trying to make sure my daughter is safe. I know my assignment as a parent. And my first assignment is to protect my daughter. Protect my children. Protect your children. Cause your children are walking up and down the street, going to school and can't even get in the school good enough before they're attacked by their peers. And then, you know, she fights all the time. She got suspended this last time for ten days, but after investigation and me just being vocal all left and right, they saw she was attacked from behind. She had to protect herself. What was she supposed to do? So she fought back. So they, okay, she can be suspended for five days. Okay. But I put her in defense class. My daughter, I don't teach them to be violent. I don't. Their usual words. She don't even want to do defense class because that's not her character. But she is constantly, constantly being cyberbullied. These kids, my daughter, unlike other kids, she is thirteen years old. And guess what she don't have that other kids do have? A cell phone, a laptop, an iPad. She don't have those things. Because I don't think she's mature enough to have those things. But other kids do have those things. And they're studying in class doing this, starting trouble. She got into this last night and you know what they did? They text each other. It's going to be a fight in our class. They all got up from different classrooms and came to the art class to do this.
Ms. Attaberry, you have, um, extended the time more than three minutes.
I'm sorry.
No, but you do have a lot of valid, um, things that, um, I think that will be very valuable for you to have an opportunity to sit down with the superintendent and he will have an opportunity to really impact some things. And then I also want to be able to protect your daughter's identity and some other things. And this is being streamed on YouTube.
Oh, okay.
So I just, you know, just want to kind of offer you that opportunity to, um, discuss some of these things that's a little bit more personal.
Okay.
For your daughter, um, not so public, you know, uh, the, the generalization, we appreciate you coming for the public, but I also want to make sure that we're conscientious that we are on, we are being streamlined and some of the personal things about your daughter, you can maybe protect her by having those, um, detailed conversations with the superintendent and just really sharing the overarching and big picture and about your concern about the overall safety of not just your daughter. We appreciate you coming this evening, you know, um, with a heart to protect all children because I have kids that, I don't know why I ain't seen you before, but my kids come from William Foster and, um, I have children at William Foster, I have children at the middle school and I have children at the high school. So, and we, me and Ms. Morrison does and Ms. Ms. King does too. And we do value the safety of the kids at school because our kids go every day to and, and deal with the same culture and climate. And that's why we have Dr. Reynolds presenting on just really working together in community collaboration. So, um, Dr. Reynolds will, um, will you have an opportunity to reach out to Ms. Attaberry?
Oh, yeah.
And really have a discussion with her regarding her concerns?
Yeah, that, that won't be an issue at, at all. I do have Ms. Samson who can speak on some of the things that we've been putting in place so far, just to address some of our concerns. And one of the items actually popped up on the agenda item today on one of the initiatives that we're trying to, to ensure that children feel safe in, in the building. So Ms. Samson, if you can.
Sure. I have my mask myself.
Oh, I should know.
Recognize me. Yvonda Hamilton, address one, zero, zero, one, three, Garfield Drive, Garfield Heights, four, four, one, two, five. As many of you know here, I am, I'm a contracted DEI consultant with the district. I had the opportunity to, um, engage with, um, Ms. Attaberry along with my colleague, Mr. Tim Hurt, who's the district's DEI learning specialist. And, um, just to reiterate the sentiments of the board that we do take allegations of bullying very seriously, um, in, in efforts of supporting a framework to really deal with the incidents or occurrences of bullying, just to, um, develop a more positive school culture. We do have some things, as you saw from the board agenda, um, that are underway. We have engaged, um, a specialist who specifically is an anti-bullying expert who will begin, um, helping us to really implement some of our restorative approaches in our middle school environment to not only work with parents, but also students in small SEO anti-bullying groups to help equip students on understanding the seriousness, the severity of bullying, and the impact of bullying on school culture and also how to resolve conflict in a positive way. And so, um, just to provide some reassurance to Ms. Attaberry, we, um, we have heard your concerns. We took the time to speak with you and because we are on the cusp of winter break, we will be following up with you the first week in January. Our goal really is to make sure that, um, the families are supported and students are supported. We actually had a very positive meeting with, um, another family who had brought some concerns around bullying to our district where we were able to bring parents together in a facilitated dialogue, understanding victims and perpetrators' perspective and just really, um, setting some foundational work to bring all parties into agreement under the same understanding that we want to hold our kids accountable for their behavior when they're in the school environment. We want to equip them with tools that are necessary and we're hoping to follow up with that process by also connecting them with some mentors that can provide that on-point accountability and support for our students and hopefully also result, results in our families taking advantage of some of those additional supports that we offer by, um, allowing their students to engage with their peers and those other social services that we provide holistically. So there are things that are underway. Your concerns have been heard. We're taking this very seriously. After we met with you, Mr. Hurt actually went back to the middle school to have a conversation with the building leadership. So, um, things are underway, things are in motion. Give us some time and we will be following back up with you, um, the first week of January. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you so much and we appreciate you just taking the time out to come, um, and share your concerns, um, with the Board of Education. It's just very important for us to hear, um, the impact, um, that climate and culture is having on our families and just know that we are in partnership with you, um, not just as, um, members of the Board of Education, not just fellow parents, but we are also your neighbors. And we value, um, our community as a whole. So you're not in this by yourself. So I just want to ensure you of that and just as a neighbor, um, if nothing else, um, we're your neighbor and we're here and we care about your child and all the other children and her safety and, um, she must have a sense of belonging and safety. And, um, she must have a sense of belonging and safety, it's not negotiable. So, um, and you're not in this by yourself. So I'm speaking as Nichelle, your neighbor. You're welcome. If there's no other, um, remarks from the public this evening, um, can I have a motion to enter into executive session as of eight, eleven P M for the purposes of discussing the evaluation of the superintendent?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? If there's no discussion, Mr. Saluka, that was moved by Ms. King and second by Ms. Morrison. Can I have roll call, please?
Ms. King?
Yes.
Ms. Morrison?
Yes.
Mrs. Daniels?
Yes. The Board of Education is going to be entering into executive session as of eight, eleven P M for the purposes of discussing superintendent evaluation. No action will be taken, um, as a result of tonight's executive session. So all those attendants, if your executive session is a private session where we deal with personnel matters, you know, we won't have any other actions.